Do you want me to join me in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. introduce his team and take over the presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. County Board Chairman, 15 vice chair. Bruning, county board supervisors, thank you for inviting us here tonight to present to you the issues our community and county has regarding mental health services and access to care. A PowerPoint presentation has been prepared for tonight and there's a hard copy on your desk. If you prefer an electronic version, we've emailed it to your county email address earlier today. Before I start with the PowerPoint, I'd just like to introduce who may, folks who may also be talking tonight. We have Jim Trushon, who's the manager of the behavioral health programs for Aging and Disability Services. Laverne Jarros, who is the director of the Division of Aging and Disability Services. Byron Wright, who is the director of Kenosha Human Development Services. Terry Neeson, who is the fiscal manager for Aging and Disability Services. And Ron Rogers, Director of Children and Family Services. And Jack Rose, who is the president of the local NAMI chapter. So let's begin. As many of you are aware, this is not just a Kenosha County issue. There is a statewide shortage of psychiatrists and hospital beds. And as a result of hospital beds not being available, we had increased placements into mental health institutes, which is at a much higher cost for the county. This next slide just represents what the county's responsibilities are when it comes to Chapter 51 proceedings. I'm not going to read it verbatim, but just pointing out that our primary responsibility is for the well-being, treatment, and care of the mentally ill, development disabled, alcoholic, and other drug-dependent citizens residing within our county, and ensuring that those individuals in need of such emergency services found within the county receive emergency, immediate emergency services. Now we'll get to our third slide, which represents the 2015 second quarter financial status as was reported to Human Services Committee on August 3rd and to the Finance Committee on August 13th. Since that time, we've had June numbers come in, so we have two columns, but I'll first point out the second quarter report in the first column of May 31st, which shows a mental health placement estimate of being over budget of approximately $1.7 million. We do have expenditure savings of approximately $395,000 and an estimated increase in our Medicaid program revenue over budget of $1 million. Putting those numbers together, we were projecting at the end of the second quarter a deficit of $246, $246,849,000. Now looking at the June numbers, you're going to see some changes. You're going to see the mental health placement estimated down to $1.5 million, $179,000 difference, the same estimated savings of $395,000, and the same estimated Medicaid program revenue being over budget by $1 million, moving our projected deficit at the end of June down to $67,000 in mental health. Now let's take a look at what's driving that deficit. The next slide has to do with the Kenosha County emergency detentions. We've charted that from 2012 until our estimated number of 2015 at 540, which you can see is a slight reduction from the number that occurred in 2014. I want to just talk briefly about what emergency detentions are, and those take place in a hospital because the person needs medical clearance in order to enter a hospital or state institute. A collaborative approach between a crisis worker, law enforcement, medical staff, and collaterals is used to determine the appropriateness of the hospitalization. In addition, the crisis worker uses a screening tool to assess psychological functioning and suicide and self-harm. This tool has been approved by a psychiatrist who oversees the crisis program. In addition, if detox is necessary, a determination is made if, whether that requires hospitalization. All these cases are reviewed concurrently by a supervisor, and all cases are staffed the next working day by a team, and supervision is provided by a psychiatrist. The next slide shows what we are experiencing now with reduction of beds at Wheaton-Franiscan St. Luke's, which is the hospital that we've been using. And real briefly, this year, Wheaton-Franiscan had three psychiatrists leave employment. Several key positions within the state at the Department of Health Services and also under the Bureau of Mental Health. What else can be done? Certainly advocacy at a state and national level. As I explained not too long ago, Medicaid does not cover institute care. Perhaps that can be changed. So certainly advocating for Medicaid coverage for stays in state ment, in mental health institutes, IMDs, Institutes of Mental Disease, state funding perhaps for the first 30 days at the institutes. And if you read the paper earlier this week, Dr. Shaw was talking about the Medicaid rates. So certainly higher Medicaid rates for psychiatrists would open more doors for people to receive services. And incentives for increasing the number of psychiatrists and nurse practitioners in underserved areas. Also incentives for inpatient psychiatric bed at a local hospital perhaps. And funding for detox facilities are all needed. Last slide we have here is just to show some of our prevention, community resources that we're using to prevent hospitalization. It certainly includes the crisis intervention training. I know you've heard Jack Rose talk about that, as far as training police officers on how to respond to someone who's in a mental health crisis. That's been very beneficial. We also have Community Crisis Intervention Partnership, which trains community providers. The Care Center, we have treatment and medication management. The Community Support Program, Comprehensive Community Services, supported departments, and bridges amongst other things. The last thing that we'd like to just point out to you once again is the newspaper article that you should have in front of you and is also emailed to you that was in the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel under the watchdog reports from August 8th, 2015. Rather timely article that's titled "Shortage of Psychiatrists: Compound State Mental Health Care Problems." I'm not going to read this article to you, but I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it. I would encourage you to do so, but I'd just like to point out a couple of things. On the back page, starting at the top, it talks about the medical schools. And it says, "The two medical schools in the state taking about 17 new psychiatry residents each year." Nationally, just more than 1,000 new doctors begin psychiatry residencies each year. It also talks about the difficulty in funding under Medicare and Medicaid. And then it goes on to state, "Even training more people won't quickly alleviate the problem because not everyone stays," UW Madison reports. "That only 60% of psychiatry graduates in the last five years went on to practice in the state. At the current rate, it will take more than 20 years to have enough psychiatrists to eliminate all shortage areas," and that does not account for retirements of those already in the field. So we got a lot of work ahead of us and are looking at a lot of different options in an effort to address this. That concludes my formal presentation tonight. I'll turn it back to the chair. We have a lot of people here that can answer questions and certainly are wanting to hear your comments and thoughts on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Is there any questions? We've got Supervisor Gans, do you have any?
I don't have a question. I have something to say.
We're doing questions first and then we'll come back to you. How's that? Supervisor Rose?
No questions tonight, sir.
Okay. Supervisor Hallman, question or comments?
Question.
We're going questions. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure who best can answer this. I know it has been mentioned a number of times in this institution that our Medicaid reimbursement rates for psychiatry practices are not substantial enough to generate interest. I noted that the federal government has something called an upper payment limit, so I'm curious as to know just exactly how much wiggle room do we have were this body to make a suggestion to the state legislature to increase the Medicaid reimbursement rate.
Would you come up to the podium and make a little listen?
This would be an estimate that I would certainly want to check out, but I think Medicaid basically pays two ways. First, for the initial psychiatric evaluation, which is approximately $138 for an hour and a half of work, and then $68 for what's called medication checks thereafter, which usually are 10 to 15 minutes. That would be my best guess at it, though I would like to defer, you know, to have specific numbers for you.
Is there a way folks can check that out and maybe bring something to Human Services Committee so that we can actually structure a resolution and put something forward? And I guess I'd apologize as the chair of that committee because this is something that we should have jumped on a long time ago, because I know at one point, I think almost all of you have mentioned it and we haven't done anything.
Yes, the answer to your question is yes, we certainly have that data. I think the other thing that private practitioners deal with, that for the public population, especially those who have severe and persistent mental illness, their no-show rate can be anywhere from 50 to 60 percent. So oftentimes appointments are scheduled, and unless you have a worker who is supportive and takes the person to the appointment, oftentimes the psychiatrist, you know, is left with an unbooked hour. We'd be glad to get you that information.
One other question. I know it was mentioned that this is not just a Kenosha problem and not just a Wisconsin problem, but a national problem. But I noted the map that I saw, it was only Wisconsin, so I don't know if you have it available, and certainly I can probably find it myself, but it would be nice to see something similar, not just in terms of Wisconsin, but also broken out by the counties in other states like Maine and Texas and Illinois and so forth, so that we can really get a sense of the drama, the scope of dealing with this.
That information probably would be available through SAMSA, the Subsubuse Mental Health Service Administration, who gives us a lot of those national figures and data.
Thank you. I may have questions later, Mr. Chairman, but thank you.
Supervisor Alveron, question?
Yes, thank you. This is a fiscal question. The report shows us that we're going to be without the Medicaid program revenues, that we were $1.7 now $1.5 million over our estimated budget. The next page on our report shows that we're 18 less people this year estimated in detentions, and we have 100, say 100 more people in the more expensive state program. So you're talking $100,000, whatever. So just fiscally, where do we, with our planning, end up with the $1.5 million shortfall and, the second part of the question is, than the $1 million revenue over budget for Medicaid?
Do you understand this question?
Did you, could you repeat the question, please?
Well, how do we, how are we $1.5 million under budget, or over budget, excuse me, for our total mental health placements? And then, how are we $1 million?
End up good for Medicaid?
End up good for, right.
The, when we put the budget together last year, we certainly were unaware that St. Luke's was looking at reducing their beds and cutting back services. So we budgeted less than $1 million for state institute placements. When St. Luke's came out and reorganized and their beds went down, and with more people having insurance, being able to access those beds, that has kind of left us out and not able to get very many people admitted in there that are county-funded. So that's what's driving that bigger $1.5 million, because they're going to the state institutes at $1,142 a day versus hospitalization at $519.
Right.
And regarding the increases in Medicaid revenue, that has just been through our programs that have worked really hard, and we put a lot of data systems together to be able to track work that's being done and be able to build that back through Medicaid and get reimbursed for the work. So that's just hard work and people following through and documenting correctly and drawing down those type of funds.
So now that we are in this situation, and I'm just talking fiscally now, and we know what happened this year when we're going through the upcoming budget, we can't count on St. Luke's anymore, correct?
That'll be, yeah, I think we'll have to take...
That would be part of the study that we hope to find out what our options are going forward.
Yeah, we need to dive in a little more deeper and find out, you know, what is their plan in the future? Are they looking at bringing back three psychiatrists that left, you know, different psychiatrists? Are they looking at expanding? Are they looking at just keeping it at 27 beds or shrinking it or closing? We don't know that. So that would be part of our environmental study, so that when we got our group together, we could have a good idea on strategies that we would need to develop then in order to begin to address those things.
Well, besides my compassion for the mentally ill, I have at least four close family members or friends that are in that predicament, I am also very compassionate about our budget. So when is this study? I mean, we're at budget time right now. So how are we doing this year's budget? I know this study can't be done by October.
No, it wouldn't be. So we've looked at those numbers, and I believe we've, what we've submitted up to the second floor at this point in time would include some adjustments in those areas. And now with the, the difficulty here, and then when you see the 1.7 to 1.5 million, is we pay for everybody that goes in the institutes, whether you have insurance or not. Medicaid, we get nothing back on. That's all of ours, our costs. However, if you're on private insurance or something through the Affordable Care Act or things like that, we pay that bill, but then we get credits when the state gets those insurance payments. So what you're seeing now is those credits are starting to come in, and they'll come in periodically throughout the year. So we'll balance that final number, what we believe it will be deficit-wise, and try to project it into next year's budget, because yes, we like to be realistic when we come in front of the board to say, this is what we think our dollar costs are going to be.
Right.
Because if you look at our detentions, they've been fairly steady over the years. There's some drops here and there. In fact, we've, we've actually have dropped, I think, from our projection from last year to what we're projecting for this year, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's ended my question at this time, but a statement would be that we can, we can definitely look and all feel very good tonight and talk about a study, but we're in September next week.
I hear you.
So we have to be looking at the budget for this year, and as compassionate as we all are or want to be, we, we have to be very secure in our numbers here.
Yes, sir. Point well taken. Is that it for you so far?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go to Supervisor Dr. Question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wrote down some questions while you were going through the PowerPoint, so. Why doesn't Medicaid cover the institutions? Do you know why?
The federal policy.
You don't?
It's been, when Medicaid was enacted in 1965, the feds put that policy together because they were afraid that if they didn't have some safeguard in that money, the states would probably move to institutionalized and house a lot of people at federal costs. So that's what I've read.
So it's always been like that?
Pardon?
It's always been that?
Yes.
They've never covered institutions?
Correct. There's been, I know there's been a Supreme Court lawsuit that someone was trying to have Medicaid pay for the placement, but the Supreme Court supported the federal policy. So, and I'm not sure what year that occurred, but this has been in place since 65.
Okay. Is there a large increase in patients with mental illness, or is this because of a shortage of psychiatrists or both? Would you say, or?
Jim, you want to?
Someone raised his hand. Mr. Rose raised his hand.
I think it's pretty clear. In fact, if you look at the math, we have fewer admissions. We're projecting for 2015 and 2014, and emergency detentions for the first time has taken a click down. So I view this as just an issue of a business partner making a decision of not taking involuntary patients who pose greater risk. Had we not had that changed by an acute hospital, I would say that we'd be in fine shape. We're $1 million over in revenue for outpatient services, emergency detentions are a little down, and our actual admissions are down. So that's part of the anxiety and sort of the frustration we all feel, is we feel like we're doing a better job in the community keeping people out. A lot of folks who end up in inpatient care unfortunately don't accept voluntary services on an outpatient basis. The name of that phenomenon is called anosognosia. People who have more severe persistent mental illness or drug abuse often don't even times realize they need help. They don't identify their symptoms. So despite a very, what I think is a very robust treatment menu we have on an outpatient basis, a lot of folks just don't follow through with treatment, and so it's more a measure of treatment non-compliance.
Okay. So you believe if this issue with the St. Luke's hadn't happened, we'd be fine, right now for this year, not going into the future with a shortage of psychiatrists?
Yeah.
Okay. So what we need to address really for the future is the shortage of psychiatrists.
I, Laverne and I just had the conversation two days ago of how long we've been in the profession. I've been 35 years. 35 years ago, we were complaining about this IMD policy that placed the cost of care to counties for Medicaid patients and the shortage of psychiatry. So these are chronic issues.
Sorry. There was a, what is that? Okay, a psychiatric nurse practitioner. I see that we're looking for one of those, and obviously it's been hard to find one. What is, I'm just wondering what the education level of a psychiatric nurse practitioner is?
It's a master's degree. Byron, right? It's a master's. It's a master's degree, and they function under the supervision of a psychiatrist.
Okay.
And the kid's psychiatrist would be Dr. McCarthy.
Okay. Then I have, I have a couple of questions from one of the supervisors that couldn't be here, so I'm not, these are his questions. So, "The county website shows that the Kenosha County Mental Health Clinic has a psychiatric physician assistant that can write prescriptions. Why is this person not being used at the detention facility to issue prescriptions?" Because they have said in Judiciary Committee that we need someone to write prescriptions for inmates. Is that, I don't...
Well, the jail and the detention center have always provided medical care for people in the jail. That's something they take upon themselves. They do not ask people outside of, they have their own contracts.
Okay, so just the departments don't overlap?
They don't.
Okay.
Not to mention, not to mention that the nurse practitioner at kids at the mental health clinic is more than dizzy, so that's why we're looking for another one.
Okay. "In his research on psychiatric physicians, it appears that they make around $200,000 per year. Is it possible to hire one for the county mental health clinic and..." Is it possible to hire one for the county mental health clinic and share this person with the detention facility? And he says, I see that there is a shortage of psychiatrists in the U.S., so there may be a problem hiring someone. How can we make the county an attractive location for a psychiatrist?
That's part of the study that we want to engage in, yes. And whether that could be a shared function is something we'd have to look at, but that's the idea of the study is to see what we can attract professionals here.
Okay. He's got one more. I do see we have psychiatrists in Kenosha at the 30th Avenue Clinic. I assume they do not want to work for the county. Have they been contacted about working part-time as a contractor?
Do you know psychiatrists?
No, I, I'm just reading someone's question.
Driving around town and found a psychiatrist that opened her door over across from like Brookside area.
Speak into the microphone.
I believe there's a psychiatrist that recently opened her office across from Brookside and her, Dr. Varma. And in checking with her office, she did not accept Medicaid patients at this time.
Okay. Does Mr. Rose have, I just see he wants to comment. And I know he adds to the discussion.
Just a comment on Dr. Varma. I mean, she's been in the community for a while. And initially, when she came in, it was strictly cash. That was just the way she set up her practice. I think to the comment about, you know, is it the lack of psychiatrists? Is there more people with mental illness? If you look right now, one in four people are affected with serious and persistent mental illness. Nationally, only four out of 10 get the requisite treatment. So, do the math on that. There are people that are not getting the required treatment. I think we all know that it is a national crisis. I think we know it's a crisis in the state. We're not ranking real high. We're not ranking, we don't take care of the people with mental illness in Wisconsin. So, I think with all that being said, I think we need to look at our community, look at our county, and what can we do? You mentioned before that if we get one nurse practitioner, you know, we could kind of, maybe it'd be better for now, but we need to look longer down the pipe, which I think what the study is going to do. And maybe we need to get a program set up with one or two or three of the universities in our area and work out. Maybe we need four or five nurse practitioners. So, we don't wait until the likes of, we now recently heard where Nancy Moskwa, who's a nurse practitioner under Dr. McCarthy, is going to be retiring. So, let's put together a plan and let's plan for five nurse practitioners. Now, this may take some money. It's going to take a partnership with some of these schools, but I mean, it's done in Wisconsin. You may or may not know, but right now, if you're going in veterinary school, which is very difficult to get into at the university, and they put out a great vet, but, once you graduate, if you go to a rural area for X number of years, you get part of your school bill paid for. So, that takes care of the animals. Why can't we do something like that in Wisconsin that takes care of the people with mental illness? So, these are some of the things we can do, but if we can do something in the county, I don't know, you may or may not know, recently Bridges Community Center, which is a huge resource for our community, a program under Kenosha Human Development Services, has just recently received a windfall. A woman by the name of Martha Hollowell stopped in Bridges back in 2000. Fast forward, in 2014, she passed away at the Hotel Dayton. In her will, she provided $194,000 to Bridges Community Center to be used to improve the center. Along with that is another $194,000 for scholarships. And the scholarship portion is still, it's a work in progress. But why couldn't we take some of the folks that are at Kenosha Human Development Services that are working there and provide a scholarship so they could go and get their masters? And with that scholarship, put a requirement, come back to Kenosha for three or four years. But I think we really need to try to look at what we can do in our community. And I think that's the purpose of what the study is trying to do. I think with respect to the jail, the Mental Health Committee has picked up and is going to try to do more for the jail. Right now, there's Dr. Hammond and Dominic Pritchett, which is a therapist. They go, they're spending more time at the jail and they're doing things in the jail that haven't been done before with respect to support sessions and things like that. So, I think, again, we're making some progress in the area. I mean, it amounts to dollars, but anyhow, I've talked too long. Thank you.
Thank you. That's why I asked the question about the education level for nurse practitioner. One more, one question, one final question, and it was after listening to Jack, Mr. Rose speak. I know we have a program, what are we doing with trying to, I don't, this probably isn't the best word, beat mental illness when people are young? I know we have like a Families First program that focuses on kids with mental illness. Are we really looking at trying to do and get younger kids to help them when they're young before they are adults and things like that? Is that something that not only the county is doing, but the state and on a federal level, that they're really trying to kind of head it off at the pass? Because, you know, that's where the best place to get it is when people are young.
The state released, there's been a program called Comprehensive Community Services. It's been around for over 10 years and it's a Medicaid-funded program across the lifespan. So, it's for children and adults. And recently, and it is funded in the governor's budget going forward, they put in a process that if we partner with another county, we can recoup the entire costs of that program. It's a Medicaid program, so the children or adults must be on Medicaid, but in the past, it was roughly a 60-40 split. So, Medicaid would pay 60% of the cost of services and the county, local tax levy, would pay the additional 40. We've partnered with Racine County. We had to go through a lengthy application process. We did it and Racine is our partner. Dads is with Kenosha Human Development Services is running in Kenosha the adult part of Comprehensive Community Services. Under DCFS, we're using Professional Services Group and a number of providers to work with youth and children. And so, our Families First program is expanding and we are using Comprehensive Community Services to expand that program. And we, beginning of the year, we had, I think, five, what you would call case manager employees, each having a caseload. We've expanded that up to, today we have nine. We plan to have 12 by the end of the year. And we plan to serve by the end of the year 144 children in this program that meet the diagnosis of either having mental illness or a substance abuse problem. And it will not cost the county local tax levy anything. Medicaid will pay for that. So, the big thing is they have to meet diagnostic criteria and they have to be on Medicaid. And a lot of the kids we work with are from poorer families where they qualify for Medicaid or their mental illness or their disability makes them qualify. So, yeah, we've really expanded it. I'll turn this back over to Jim.
I think also there's been some state developments and national developments. State development is the governor's budget contains money for the Office of Children's Mental Health. That never existed before. And I think nationally, I think Ron and a lot of his staff are trained in early childhood trauma. At a federal level through the, through SAMSS, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Association, there's a lot of evidence-based practices, state-of-the-art ways of doing things for kids who have had early childhood experience or traumatic experiences, which really become predictive of later mental health issues. So, the CCS gives our divisions an opportunity to work seamlessly and it's going very well.
So, you see where the state and the federal government is moving toward helping children more and like kind of heading it off at the pass rather than waiting till they're adults with mental illness? Okay, that's good, that's good to hear. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Gabriel up the floor.
I guess my question is, how many beds would we need in Kenosha?
I think that, again, is one of the purposes of the study. In addition to the beds that we purchased, I mean, there are people that have never had access before because they didn't have insurance, Medicaid, or the Affordable Care Act. And some of the beds, in addition to St. Luke's lowering the number of beds, a number of the beds have been filled by people who didn't before have access and who sought voluntary services in the hospital. So, I think that's part of what we have to look at, not just what we're purchasing, but what the community's needs are. And that would be part of the study.
Move on to Supervisor Esposito.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my question is in regard to, we know there's a shortage of psychiatrists. That's not going away anytime soon. Said there's going to be a 20-year gap if we'd even have quite a bit of these people going into this field. You stated that there were some other avenues we were going down. Can you speak at that to this body? Different ideas? Mr. Janson, when you ended your discussion, you said there's some different ideas that we're working at. Can you elaborate on that a little bit, please?
I think that has to do with looking at other professionals to try to fill in the gaps. You've heard about our attempted recruitments for a psychiatric nurse practitioner, looking at physician assistants to see what role they could play in it and starting to go down those avenues. Because, yeah, that newspaper article does not paint a very positive picture of psychiatry in our state and nationwide. So, we're exploring those. Kids has been looking for the nurse practitioner, like I said, for over 10 months. They've had luck in the past of bringing in a few and Byron is pretty confident that it's going to occur again, but it does take time. So, it's probably being a little more proactive and Jim?
I'd like to add to that because I think that's a fantastic question.
Well, to me, this is something that, I'm glad we're talking about it now because it's, obviously, I've heard in through the discussion, this is a chronic issue. You said it yourself, 25, 30 years ago, you've been talking about, we're going to have a problem with shortage of psychiatrists and people getting not reimbursed at the proper rate. Well, let's not hold our breath and think Medicaid is going to pay more money for this. I mean, let's be honest and real of the situation. So, yeah, I mean, I'm really...
One of the more creative reasons is to absolutely make sure that while the psychiatrist is here, to use their time as effectively as we can. So, they don't need to be calling in prescriptions. They don't need to be making appointments. They don't need to be doing all that other Medicaid stuff that they have to do. One of the things, one of the ideas that we've talked about at the kids' level is considering hiring a psychiatric RN who could do symptom management groups. And say, we had 12 to 15 people in a group and if they needed to see a psychiatrist or if they needed a med change, then refer them down to the psychiatrist down the hall who could do that. And you could, you know, instead of having 15 people being seen individually, you could maybe take the top five who really needed to be seen. So, that's happening in some other communities, but that has a limited impact because we really do need a psychiatrist or an advanced practice nurse practitioner. We try to minimize all that superfluous unnecessary work from our medical staff as much as possible. Maybe we could do more of that.
Okay, all right.
Another thought that we've had is, could we, when we look at targeting services that would avoid escalation of situations and avoid emergency detentions? For example, if we invested in some additional follow-up to our crisis calls, targeted follow-up on individuals who may, whose situations may exacerbate, would that result in fewer detentions? So, I think those are the kinds of things that we need to look at. And where could we target services that might reduce the number of calls?
Mr. Rose has...
Everybody can hear me. But with that, with that nurse practitioner, and you have a psychiatrist, right now, Kenosha County has Dr. Matt McCarthy. He is outstanding psychiatrist and he really pulls his weight. But just to Jim's point, right now, we've got one nurse practitioner. If we had two more nurse practitioners, that would take the load off Dr. McCarthy and it would allow us to see more patients. Now, again, back to the comment about nurse practitioner, the academic, what you need to get one. It's about a two and a half year program. If you got people going and started lining up for and just start it, start them going through the process. Maybe we can get a couple of homegrown people who may already be working here and bring them back or just to get started on it. So, it isn't a crisis when somebody decides to retire. And it would be great if we could do the same thing with, for a psychiatrist, but that seems more and more difficult in the recruiting process. But maybe with the study, again, they can come up with some tricks that can help us find that psychiatrist. One other thing I'd also like to mention with IMDs, and there's another cost associated with the trips back and forth to Winnebago. And right now, since January, the Kenosha Police Department has made 85 trips to Winnebago. And many times, it's a lot more than just driving back and forth and dropping. With so many people and the loss of psychiatric beds in region, in state, many times they're in a queue. You don't just drive up to the door and drop. You wait, you get in the queue, and then they're finally admitted. And so, that amount for Kenosha Police Department right now is $49,000. And that's just back and forth, back and forth. I don't have, sorry, I don't have the figures for the Kenosha Sheriff's Department, but I'm sure it's going to be, that's going to be an expense too. And anybody I can get, if I get some copies, maybe here's a one page or two sides on this whole thing with background information on IMD, if anybody's interested in that. I can, we can get some copies, maybe. Thank you.
No, I have just one other question, Chairman. At the Judiciary and Law Committee, we've talked about this quite a bit. You know, if you're treating mental illness at that stage, you've kind of missed the boat if you're treating somebody while they're incarcerated. We should try to get them before and so on and so forth. I guess my question is Supervisor Decker asked about psychiatric or nurse practitioners or psychiatrists working in the jail. My understanding with medical doctors, they have to have a specific type of jail degree to work in the jail. Do you know if psychiatrists have to have this too? Kind of like, it's, you know...
The ideal would be a forensic psychiatrist. And yes, there are doctors, psychiatrists who are trained to deal with incarcerated
So, I'm assuming it would have to be a professional that has done something over and above. You can't take a psychiatrist that works eight to five?
Well, actually, no. I think the preferred would be a forensic psychiatrist, but yes, other doctors can work. Just a regular board-certified psychiatrist could work in a jail.
They could, okay.
Yes, they could.
I mean, that was important. I mean, so the overlap of people, that's important in my opinion, so. Okay, I want to thank Mr. Janson and his team. I think you're doing a great job and keep it up. That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you. Move on to Supervisor Noble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess one of my questions, it seems like a lot of questions have been answered with the answer that that's one of the things we hope to address with this new, with this study. So, my question really was, is who are the local stakeholders? And maybe we should have an outline of exactly what you would hope to, you know, address in this study or with local stakeholders. Who are local stakeholders? That's a neat word, but who are they?
They certainly would be the, a lot of the mental health providers in our community, staff in Vern's shop and Ron's shop when looking at that. Jack and folks, the consumers also, you go down to Bridges and talk to folks at the care center. And then reaching out to the hospitals and finding out what their plans are, if any, both our local hospitals and also St. Luke's up in Racine, to see what's going on there. And then including the schools in that discussion too, the colleges. And we could go across the border to a university to see what they are doing as far as training and maybe reaching out to them. So, it's, it could be a fairly large, all-encompassing group. As far as the outline and plan of what we're doing, we received feedback from the consultant just two days ago. the consultant just two days ago, or, excuse me, yesterday, um, where we're now in the process of negotiating and kind of, uh, streamlining some of those thoughts. So, I'd be more than happy if we enter into that contract with them to share that information with the county board as a whole, so you could see what it, exactly it is we're trying to drill down.
I think another stakeholder would be the Kenosha Community...
Another stakeholder would be the Kenosha Community Health Center. Now, that, that is the, the federal body that works in our community, and they, too, have a behavioral health responsibility. And they are having a tough time. You may or may not know, but the, the Community Health Center in Racine has shut down. And so, some of the patients that they used to have are coming here, and that's for medical, dental, but they also have a, a behavioral health unit, supposed to have, okay?
Well, this wasn't my que... That sparks another question. Uh, I know I've heard that the Community Health Center is if, let's say you graduate with a, uh, as a dentist, and if you work at the Community Health Center for three years, you can, they'll wa, they'll basically pay off your, um, your, uh, school loans. Do they have something like this for the, a local psychiatrist? Is there a program like that for psychiatrists?
We've, we've had a number of conversations, we've had a number of conversations with them and, and two different directors. That hasn't become known to us, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. And I think that's part of what we wanna learn through our study, you know, what options, what strengths or opportunities we have through them. The difference between, um, the reimbursement that would be received by a private provider and that of a federally qualified health center, which is what the Kenosha Community Health Center is, is they're actually ba, reimbursed based on actual expense. Um, in the community, on an outpatient basis or an inpatient basis, psychiatrists are reimbursed on what's called a fee-for-service basis. So, they have financial advantages to hire a psychiatrist that we don't have, 'cause they pay, Medicaid pays on actual expenses, not just a fee-for-service basis, which I tried to guess the, the rates, but that obviously doesn't hire, you know, a psychiatrist, so. Some work to do there.
One last question, man.
I think there is a, a federal program where they can get up to sixty thousand dollars for two years to help offset some of those expenses or increase the salary for somebody, and I believe that would cover psychiatrists, too.
Well, you, somebody mentioned psychiatric RN, and we had a committee, the whole meeting, I don't know if it was a year or two ago, and it was another national problem, pretty much in your, your shop here, uh, where there's a shortage of, they're predicting it be a shortage of registered nurses to be in the neighborhood of four million. There's not gonna be enough registered nurses to take care of the baby boomers. And, uh, so, where are you gonna find this psychiatric RN if there's aren't, aren't any registered nurses to be found, either? Has there been any movement on that? I mean, it seems like we have two national problems that should be resolvable if the right people were working on it, and I'm not sure the, you know, all the answers are in this room. So, is there any progress being made locally on the nursing shortage, projected nursing shortage?
The only thing I'll say is, is, as far as we run the community support program, we have to hire nurses there. We have had no problem hiring nurses in the field of working with people with, with RNs, with severe and persistent mental illness, because one thing about the nursing profession is when you get older, it's a very strenuous job, and working with people with severe and physical, or severe and persistent mental illness isn't that strenuous. So, we've been able to recruit some really good nurses to work with people with severe and persistent mental illness, so.
Is that it, Supervisor Noble?
Yeah.
Move on to Supervisor Ritzloff, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a quick couple of questions. Um, can one of you take me through the logistics of, of a mental health case? Um, is it start from the, if, does it start from the doctor? A doctor recommending? How, how do, how do I become from just walking down the street as a normal person to having to go to an institution in all course of time?
The way a person accesses, uh, behavioral health services in Kenosha County is through the Mental Health Substance Abuse Resource Center at the Kenosha Human Development Services, which is Byron's, uh, agency. They dial six-five-seven-seven-one-eight-eight, and they'll get a receptionist, and that receptionist will start to discern whether or not the call is an urgent case or an emergent one. An emergent case is one in which there's public safety or patient safety that's primary concern. If that's the case, they, the call is transferred to the adult crisis unit. Um, most times, um, it's an urgent call, um, and in that case, the call is referred to the Mental Health Substance Abuse Resource Center. We've done a quality improvement program that identifies, we can see a person either that day or the following day in the resource center. The resource center, we will go over a menu option of what we have to offer, psychiatry, outpatient counseling, care center, um, supported departments, all the kinds of things that were listed up there. And we find that most folks need that, you know? It's only really a few people who need adult crisis. Now, if it's a safety issue, uh, immediately, we try to, often the police are involved, emergency room would be involved. We try to meet the individual at an emergency room, um, because to proceed further, we need what's called a, um, medical clearance. There are a lot of physical, um, diseases that can mimic, um, symptoms of mental illness, elderly people dehydration, oftentimes, they can become disorientated or confused. So, we have this, we have this merge of adult crisis, emergency room staff, which means their doctor, their nurse, sometimes their social worker, and maybe family members who sit down, and, they don't sit down, but they collaborate with one another to find out, you know, is this person a candidate for an emergency detention? We find that out of every seventeen contacts with adult crisis, only one of those seventeen contacts will result in a hospitalization or a commitment. We also find that for every one person we put into a hospital or an institute, we can divert two to the care center. Um, so, we pride ourselves in giving a person choice and trying to have them go to less costly outpatient services. If you talk to our consumers or our patients, they actually will tell you that going to a hospital is more traumatizing for them. They're not in control of their daily routine, they're not in control of their diet, they don't have control sometimes of what kinds of clothes they wear. It's often a dorma store, a dormitory style of bedroom. Um, in fact, we find patients who will lie to us. They'll say they're doing better than they actually are, just because they find hospitals so traumatizing. So, really, our system is geared to try to move people into less restrictive settings, which is called for under chapter fifty-one. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
And just real quickly, real briefly here, um, if Med, if we didn't have anyone, hypothetically, on Medicaid, how would our lives be different here in the county? No, no one was on Med, had Medicaid coverage here, 'cause they didn't, they just didn't have to have it. They're either covered by Affordable Healthcare Act, or they're covered by an employer plan, or they're on Medicare. Medicaid didn't exist. Well, would, how would our lives be different here?
Many insurances have the same issue accessing psychiatry as Medicaid does.
Okay.
I used to work for a managed care company before I came to Kenosha County called CNR Health, and one, and we had people who had private insurance, we had people who had WEA insurance, we had people who had Abbott insurance, and those accounts would tell us of the frustrations of their insured finding psychiatrists here.
Yeah.
And that was even for plans that were a lot more sufficient than Medicaid. So, um, even if we didn't have Medicaid, well, first of all, if we didn't have Medicaid, you'd be paying, the county board, our division would be paying more for psychiatric medications, psychiatric outpatient counseling, psychiatry, um, a lot of other services.
But wouldn't that be covered by insurance?
Well, depending on how the plan would be, assuming if they were...
What plan doesn't cover that? I, I, I don't know of any private plans that don't cover that.
Correct. Um, but many of the Medicaid...
I'm not talking about Medicaid now, not Medicaid. Remember, I said, forget Medicaid for a minute?
Well, I was just gonna say that many of those same plans are, are, private plans have HMOs, and those HMOs have difficulty finding psychiatry. So, the same issue would exist.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Ritzloff. Supervisor, uh...
Yes, I know you just said that a lot of the patients don't like to go to hospitals, but, um, recently had a conversation with a former alderman and supervisor, Mark Midori, and, uh, this issue has come up in the past with the problem with mental health. Mark Midori had told us that he took it upon himself to go to management, uh, Kenosha Memorial Hospital, and ask them to take on some of our mental health cases. He was told specifically that there was not a demonstrated need, that's why they would not do it. Well, I think not-for-profit local hospitals should serve the community, and I believe we now have a demonstrated need. Um, I know St. Catherine's, their old facility, had a fourth-floor unit in it, and, um, my question is, how can we convince our local hospitals to help serve the community by taking on some of these cases again?
One of the changes I've seen in my service is there are a lot of private psychiatric hospitals that have closed. Charter, Northbrook, Greenbrier, one of the larger psychiatric, uh, inpatient facilities was located at Aurora in Milwaukee, you know, the downtown campus. So, um, inpatient psychiatric services are seen as high-risk, um, because of the liabilities, civil liability, patient liability. They're also seen as poor revenue centers, um, it doesn't bring in a lot of money, um, staffing is hard to find, and so, a lot of private hospitals have just gone away from that. So, there's a whole national trend of fewer psychiatric beds. How do you convince them that they should step up to the plate? Um, by county board supervisors contacting them, by, by us making this, um, an issue. Saw the slide that John presented that, who has responsibility for behavioral health services in the county is the county board. So, we have to work better with you to have you make some contacts and insert some influence to have some of these private hospitals take some public responsibility.
Thank you.
Is that it, Supervisor Danson?
And then, that's also an issue that we're going to have addressed through our study. So, when I talked about stakeholders, I mentioned the hospitals, and it's reaching out to them to get more information on what they see as the issues, and if they're willing to sit at the table and help us come up with a good plan.
Supervisor Mead, John's had the floor.
First, I just want to say thank you. I think I've had conversations with just about everyone over there, and, um, this is an issue that I've always been very passionate about. Um, some of the questions I wanted to ask were already covered, and we've covered quite a bit in, um, Human Services Committee. But one thing I wanted to touch on, again, was inpatient. Um, there were some things that we had discussed that I had never heard back about, um, first and foremost, being the private, uh, hospitals in Kenosha, and the possibility of having a partnership with them, kind of a community hospital, but in partnership with them, so that we would bear some of that burden, because we know that they do go under. Um, so, in the long run, I mean, we've been given cases, um, even today, I received an email, we were told about a case where we're spending thirty-nine thousand dollars per month to care for, um, a young, a young patient, thirty-nine thousand dollars a month. Um, so, I, I just think that I would really be curious, and I'm hoping that that's gonna be a part of the study and something that they're going to be looking into, that type of, not just trying to get them to, but maybe perhaps some type of partnership where we could help, and, and hopefully, give them a little bit more incentive to, to take on that challenge.
I think that's excellent, but I also think, too, looking at other counties surrounding us, 'cause I know that Milwaukee County Behavioral Health Division is downsizing their hospital.
Absolutely.
So, they're competing for hospital beds. I know that Racine, us, Walworth, all of Southeast Wisconsin are looking for beds, so, what I would like to see as a positive step is if we would have the opportunity to conceptualize a regional non-IMD hospital attached to a hospital, that, that would be non-IMD, so then we could collect, uh, Medicaid. And I didn't mean to be flip when I said the county board has a role, because I think...
I agree, we do.
'Cause I think, uh...
I agree completely.
Supervisor Ritzloff, uh, the last Human Services Committee, um, and I think, I don't know if it was Aaron or, no, uh, um, another supervisor looked at me and said, "What can we do? You have to tell us what we can do." I think, you know, follow up on this issue regionally through, um, Wisconsin Counties Association or Wisconsin Counties Human Services Organization, because when I get together with my colleagues, we all talk about this. We really do, you know? And we've carried the ball, um, to a lot of different people. The people that we've talked to over the past years are Secretary of Health and, of Health Services, Tom Smith, Kitty Rhodes, the Division of Healthcare Access and Accountability, Don Hurman, Division of Quality Assurance, Mark Hale, Division of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, Joyce Allen, and Pat Kirk, Patrick Kirk, um, excuse me, Patrick Cork, our statewide crisis service network, and Brad Munger with the State of Wisconsin, the Southeast Regional Mental Health Coordinators, Wisconsin Counties, uh, Human Services Association, Mental Health Committee, Mike Lappin, Joan Sternwise, Kathy Colley, Liz Aldred, there with Walworth, Jefferson, Waukesha, and Ozaki County, our regional, Southeast Regional, Angela Moran. We've also sent a letter to the Office of the Insurance Commissioner, State of Wisconsin. We've also provided input to the State NAMI about taking this issue on. I've also talked to Disability Rights Wisconsin, and now we're talking, you know, to you, the Kenosha County Board. So, we've carried the torch, and now we need some help, you know? We need some political advocacy.
You have them, you do. I just want to ask one more thing, too. Um, it's probably about a year ago now, and maybe, hopefully, somebody remembers, but I come across an article about Green Bay that I had forwarded to some people on Human Services, uh, at Human Services. And the article was actually two different companies kind of fighting over building, um, an inpatient, inpatient facility centers in Green Bay within a certain period, and I'm wondering, you know, if we ever looked into why, why, what's, what's perpetuated to create a climate there where they're actually fighting over building inpatient centers, and we can't get anyone near here to, to, to take that on? So, what's going, does anybody know what's going on in Green Bay and why they're actually so anxious to get in there and build?
I, you know, I hate to keep, keep saying that this, the study, the study, but that's really what we're trying to do, and we, we appreciate all the, the interest that, but what we want to do is have, um, make sure that we study that situation, understand what's going on there, understanding, um, why the hospitals aren't, um, aren't coming to, to the plate, up to the plate, understanding what our resources are, not only in Wisconsin, across the border at Rosalind Franklin University, could they be a resource? And to, to really get an understanding of the dynamics before we forge ahead. And so, I hate to keep saying, "The study, the study," but that's really what we're trying to do is, and why we took a slower approach to this, 'cause we wanted to do it right.
Absolutely, and that's wonderful, and if that's a part of that, that's, that's wonderful, because I think that's an important part, to find out what they did there to make it so attractive for them to come in. Um, again, I just want to thank you all. I, I, you know, I, you're biggest fan, and I think it's amazing what you do with what we have, so, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gens, you have a question?
No, I don't. I just want to talk. But I, I think, you know, I could ask a question and then just keep talking. Since I waited this long, so...
So, I won't let you do that, I'll let you ask the question, and you can make your statement. So, that's what we're on right now.
Okay. I'll, I'll wait till everybody's done then.
You'll be first in queue, first in queue when we go to statements.
Thank you.
I promise you that.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't turn your light off, by the way, either, so...
Okay, well, I, I don't know who did.
Supervisor Rose, you have a question, or...
You know, when the St. Catherine's Hospital closed its...
You know, when the St. Catherine's Hospital closed its psychiatric ward, the County Board Human Services Committee did meet with the management of United Hospital Systems and tried to do something about that issue. The executive at that time backed the hospital executives, not the position that we were taking, that it should remain open. I think we've got, you know, what are you doing to get them back in the discussion? Not only United Hospital, but Aurora. Because on the one hand, you talk about, well, there's a shortage of psychiatrists and nurses in that field. But if you're thinking about coming to a community, are you likely to come to a community if you are a psychiatrist or a psychiatric nurse that has no psychiatric facility? What does that say to you as a physician about the commitment of the community? Well, you have to go to Racine. It would be like being a surgeon, coming to a community without an operating room. Is that likely? It, it's not. So we can talk about psychiatrists and nurses and all of that, but until we bring back Aurora and United Hospital into this discussion, I don't think we're going to get anywhere. And, and that's why I, I'm asking, what are we doing right now on that particular issue? Second question has to do with this length of stay chart that you have. And if you take a look at that length of stay chart, I think it's very telling. If you go to the hospital, you're probably going to be there a little less than five days. If you go to the care center, you're going to be there, let's say, three and a half days. If you go to the state institution, it's, you're going to be there nine or 10 days. Why is that? Because you're merely sending people up to the state institution because you have no local option. So we're sending them to the most expensive facility. How, what, you know, we've got to look at some new solutions. What are you doing to treat more people on an outpatient basis? Are they, you talk about psychiatrists, well, what about the psychologists? There are a good many psychologists in the community. Can some of these people be treated there? What, how can we expand, for example, the care center? I mean, that's another way. Why aren't we taking a look at that? I understand what has been said here about this study, but this has been an issue of longstanding. I say going all the way back to that meeting that was chaired by Supervisor Boyer when she was the chair of the Human Services Committee and met with those hospital executives. And I remember that evening being there at that committee meeting. So this is a very old problem, and now we're still talking about a study and what we're going to do. We were, seemed to be, as pointed out by your chart and your discussion, we're treating fewer people at greater cost. And whenever you have a problem where you have almost a $2 million overrun, I mean, that's a big problem and a more urgent problem than we got to wait for the study, so.
Does anybody want to answer one or two of those questions that he had proposed there?
There was, I think there were several questions in that. Last year, or maybe it was in, in January, that Jim went through every crisis report from, from the previous year to see because we, we had in mind that the care center could be expanded to serve more people. And he went through there, and he did identify some folks that perhaps could have been served at, at the care center if there were more beds. But for the most part, he found that the people that, that were sent to the hospital were sent there appropriately. The, why we have, unfortunately, with, with, and they were because of the severity of their, of their behavioral issues. Unfortunately, with the, with the lowering of the St. Luke's beds, those people were now went to Winnebago. Now, Jim can tell you more of the status of the people, those long-term people. There's a very severe situation. And the people, and the reason that they're there, that they have a higher length of stay is because they have people with severe behavioral issues. If you wanted to describe some of the situations, but they're, they're, they're there for a length of time because they need to be there, and we can't find appropriate placement for them in the community because of their behavioral issues.
We have one gentleman, probably the most severe case. He's in his mid-50s. He's not much older than I am. I think John knows of the case. He's been there since October 22nd of last year. He is a Kenosha County resident, but he had worked in corrections in the state of New York most of his life, and he moved back here to be closer to his family, to come back home. He has Lewy Body's Syndrome, which is a form of dementia that manifests itself in, in a number of ways. For him, he has no impulse control, and he's been getting worse. And so he has been rejected by a number of the county nursing homes, including ours. He is treated on fentanyl, which is an opiate pain reliever, to tranquilize him because frankly, when he's not sleeping, he's acting out and attacking people. He's much like your patient a while ago that you had, that you and I talked about. Older geropsychiatric patients who there is no nursing home that will take them, who end up at the geropsychiatric unit at Mendota Mental Health Institute. This gentleman, it's quite tragic. He has a wonderful family, a fantastic wife who's very supportive. But he sleeps during the day in the fetal position, and when they want to wake him up, they give him Ritalin stimulant to help him to eat. He's lost 65 pounds. We have talked to numerous people to try to find an alternative. So as that slide says on the bottom, there are a few cases that really drive that rate up. Other cases we have are long-term care cases, usually developmentally disabled, also with poor impulse control. And there's no other place than the institutes that will handle their aggressive behavior.
Yeah, except your chart says 10 days, not, that's not long-term care. I'm, I'm talking about the chart, not about that. If you look at the chart, length of stay.
That chart is, that's average.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's average. So you have, we have, one of the biggest, biggest increase in the institute utilization are the short-termers, the ones, the folks that would normally go to Racine.
Right, that's what's driving your budget up.
Right, right. That's exactly right.
So those, those people it would seem could be treated locally if there was a place locally. Or the care center expansion. But again, why aren't we including the Aurora executives and the United Hospital in this discussion? Or is that, or they're just not going to even?
No, we have Pete, Pete Johnson, who is the Director of Behavioral Health Services at Aurora, and his subordinate Larry Lenz, that certainly know us, and we've talked to them. Frankly, we would like to use Aurora Psychiatric or Aurora South Shore, but oftentimes they don't accept our referrals, much as most private hospitals don't, because they come on an involuntary stance, you know, they're ED. And by very nature, those folks are acting out and they're aggressive. So they don't fit in with the voluntary, more docile kinds of patients that they would normally treat. So, you know, our service network, we've also had, passed contracts with Rogers Memorial Hospital. They took over the Charger, Charter Facility on Lincoln, just on the other side of Highway 100 in West Dallas. They would typically, and if you talk to law enforcement and our emergency room, our N's typically not accept.
I guess what, the way you described the problem, there's no solution except just paying, paying the bill. And I don't think that's really acceptable. Now, one other thing that we haven't talked about is when somebody is detained, they are first brought to Kenosha Hospital for a physical exam and then taken to, let's say, St. Luke's or Mendota. Why are we taking them? It would seem that that would be a more expensive procedure, the two hospital solutions. And that was something that was developed following that meeting a number of years ago, Human Services meeting with the hospital executives, Mr. Keel being the county executive. That was what was developed. Why are we, that would seem more expensive. Why aren't we just doing it all at one location?
Why, why are we not doing emergency, or why are we not doing medical clearance at one location?
Yes, why do we go to, let's say, Kenosha Hospital and then take them to St. Luke's Hospital? You get two bills. It would seem to me that that's inefficient. That's what the police officers tell me as well.
Because St. Luke's refuses us to use their emergency room. That was a change that happened at St. Luke's Racine a while ago. Law enforcement is directed to take, law enforcement takes the person most often to the closest emergency room. And that's going to be Aurora or KMH.
You're going to use the mic now because.
I've got a ton of batteries already. I don't know if you guys are wearing up.
There you go.
He turned it on.
So law enforcement takes the person to the closest ER.
I know, they're directed to do that, I understand that. But it's also strikes me as the more expensive option to use two hospitals, two sets of physicians, two sets of emerg, one set of emergency room, and then the psychiatric.
Actually, we don't pay for medical clearance Supervisor Rose. So we have no expense for, we had this conversation previously. I told you, we have no expense. The county does not pay for medical clearance at any of the private hospitals.
Well, government does. Government pays for it, maybe we, Kenosha County, but we as taxpayers are paying for it, so.
And I think the other, the other, the other issue is a minority of people are counted by the funding. The majority, minority of people are funded by Kenosha County. The majority of people are funded by Badger Care or regular health insurance. Who would direct them where to go?
Well, let me just ask you this question. What do you see as the solution?
I just said, a regional, non-IMD hospital that would take involuntary patients, that would be run by a private hospital so we could collect Medicaid, and it would reduce the county, the counties. I think there is a solution, and that's why I encourage the county board, you know, to walk with us and follow and do some networking with these private hospitals because I think if we could locate a unit on their grounds, they could collect Medicaid, it would reduce our cost and our partners and.
Well, what is the administration doing then to follow up that? If that's the cheaper solution, what is, what is the administration doing to follow up on that?
Well, I mentioned a whole list of county stakeholders, state stakeholders we've talked to. We're talking about, you know, hiring a, you know, planner for us. So I guess that would be my answer. That would be what we would intend to do.
Is that it Supervisor Rose?
It is.
All right, is there any more questions now on the panel? And then we'll go on to statements. Okay, so I'm going to clear the board. Supervisor Gans, you have the floor for your statement, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a lot of statements. It's because of me that we're, we're sitting here. I made this motion on the Finance Committee, and it stems from about seven years of frustration on this issue since I've been on the county board. I'll never forget the first time that, when I sat on Human Services and it was reported to us that we had two cases that were court-ordered that went up, up north somewhere, and it was costing us about $670,000. And where do we get that in the budget? And that's when you get the financial knee-jerk reaction to it. But that started my frustration with the system. And now I hear it goes way back even further and further. Quite frankly, the, the point of why I wanted this meeting and why I want to be here tonight is because I'm done hearing reports and talking. I want some actions, okay? I, I want to leave this meeting tonight with somebody doing something, okay? That's what I want. And I mean, I could sit here and one out of four people have mental illness. You know, we're talking about detentions, but I'm talking about all the way Supervisor Decker brought up, from childhood up. I mean, this is an issue that is affecting our community, and we could sit here and say, "We don't have psychiatrists. We don't have beds. We don't have this." I happen to agree with Supervisor Rose. It comes down to planning. We have to figure something out. We can't wait 20 years for things to, to get repopulated so we can handle this. In 20 years, we'll have more problems. We're, we're handling this reactively instead of proactively, okay? So that, then, as it goes along, you know, I hear, I hear at Finance that, "Oh, we have this other hole, but we're going to plug it because we got Medicaid stuff, or we can shift things over." That's all well and good. And I think our Human Services Department is, is doing a good job. I'm not, I didn't mean to put anybody on the defensive with having this meeting, okay? But I've heard report after report of the situation we're in, and I want solutions. I don't want a study started now. That, that disappoints me. That frustrates me, okay? I, I wanted something before. I, I want us to, to move towards some action with this. We have, evidently, we have a consultant that's giving us information, that's leading us into a study that I really don't know anything about. But we do, we have financial issues. And part of my problem stems to the people who actually need our help, our community. What I wanted tonight was to form like a seven or a nine-member subcommittee, you know, authorized by, by the chairman, made up of hospital people, nursing staff, people in our Human Services Department that can analyze and look at this and come up with solutions. The, the time to sit here and say, "Oh, we have a problem." Yeah, we have a problem. And I, I, I'm frustrated, and I apologize for ranting and raving, but sometimes I get fired up. This is one of them. And I mean, I've got note since I was, I'm, I'm last almost now. I've got note after note, you know? Study, how, how much is it going to cost? How long will it take? What ages are going to be studied? What can we do? I love the community-based, you know? I, I love all kinds of, of ideas here, but I want, I want solutions. I want solutions presented to us. And I know we can't snap our fingers and have those solutions, and we're working on it, but we have to get in front of this issue. I mean, you know, I heard somebody say, "No disrespect. Hey, if St. Luke's hadn't closed, we'd be fine." No, no, we're not fine. More and more people have mental health issues. It costs us more and more money. The trends, okay, now, now we have, instead of $600, it's $1,000 a day. And that's just the people who are, are detained or court-ordered or institutionalized. What about the ones walking around? I heard another statistic I wrote, I wrote down tons of statistics. One of 17 calls. So 17 people call us asking for help, and we get one into a hospital? Maybe I misunderstood. I mean, those are even only the people that come out. What about the ones that don't? We have an issue here, and we have a responsibility to our community to look at solutions to this problem. I've been saying this for a long time, and I think it's time that we, as a board, look at solutions. So I, I want, after my light is off and I sit here, I want somebody to come up with solutions before I go home and watch the Cub game. So that's, that's what I want. Thank you for your attention.
It may take you a little longer than, than that to see the game, I don't know.
Settle down.
Okay, who, are you off or on? You've been turning on and off your light there? Supervisor Hallman, you're on now. Don't, don't keep hitting it because you're going to keep turning it off. Go ahead now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I often enjoy the frustrations of my senior colleague behind me because it's a voice that says we should do something, and that makes me very excited. One of the things that, you know, I, to a certain extent, what I heard tonight, this is maybe a second, probably even third go-round for me in hearing a lot of this. What jumps out at me as possibilities? I guess the first thing I would say is, okay, we know there's a shortage. There have been attempts to tackle that at the federal level and at the state level. They have been a little more successful at the state as opposed to the federal. So here's some of what I'm going to suggest. I would suggest to this body that it get in touch with Representative Kirkman, who I believe is still co-chair of the Joint Committee on Audit, specifically for the purposes of having that group of folks look at the mental health expenditures of the Department of Corrections. And I say that because the last time that was looked at was 2009, looking at what fiscal year, 2007, 2008? And the number that they came up with was roughly 60 million in terms of what was spent by DOC on inmate mental health. Why is that important? That's important because if we know that we're incarcerating folks both at the state and local level who have mental health issues, that some of that money could potentially be redirected towards graduate medical education programs, which would address some of the issues that we have in terms of getting nurse practitioners who can then afford to get the master's degrees
in terms of getting nurse practitioners who can then afford to get the master's degrees and psychiatrists and so forth. That's one suggestion that I would have for us to begin to do that. Um, the second that I would have would be to have a conversation with Congressman Ryan, who if I'm not mistaken is chair of the Budget Committee. Why is that significant? That's significant because in a number of medical papers, one of the things, or rather I should say advocacy groups, one of the things that continually gets mentioned is the nineteen ninety-seven Federal Budget Amendment Act. Why is that significant? It's significant because it literally placed a cap on federal government assistance for graduate medical education. So again, why is that significant? It's significant because the bulk of doctors and nurses in this nation have been able to use that so that they could continue their careers and be in the medical profession. That's one of the things that came out of the Veterans Affairs Study in terms of having the federal government addressing the backlog, is the major role that the federal government plays in terms of getting doctors and nurses into the pipeline and spread out through across the nation. So, that's really, really significant. So, if we can have a conversation with him about somehow fixing that, to lift that cap so that more people can be, as it were, enrolled or have access to federal assistance for graduate medical school, that would be really great. That's an action that we can take and probably might have some sort of immediate effect and reduce that twenty-year number. Um, the third thing I might add is that I discovered that inside of HHS, there's actually an advisory committee that they put together that goes all the way back to nineteen eighty-seven that specifically deals with graduate medical education and trying to coordinate programs across the VA, across the Department of Defense, across Health and Human Services and, and, and working with various hospitals that are considered teaching facilities, of which I believe the Medical College of Wisconsin is one. Uh, one of the members on that advisory committee is a doctor in Chicago. It would probably make good sense for us to contact her and bring her here to have a conversation with us about what's going on in terms of addressing that and where that team is in terms of dealing with that. So, I realize those aren't necessary things that fix it tomorrow or necessarily next week, but I think it'll definitely make a dent in that twenty-year number. And our local hospitals have been involved in the mental health conversation, particularly because the Affordable Care Act has built into it mental health parity, so there really wasn't a way for them to escape being a part of that and trying to address that as an issue. So, if I come up with anything else in the next five, ten minutes, I'll let you know. But so far, for the last eighty or ninety, I think that's what I got, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gobler on the floor.
Uh, as far as supervisor is against goes, appointing a nine-person committee, what having no idea what to go after makes very little sense. They want to do a study so we have some kind of plan, some kind of goal, some kind of idea what the real problems are. I agree with supervisor Holman, contact our legislators, but that's long-term fix. We need to fix next year and the year after. With the study, we will have the ability to go to the hospitals to say, this is what the community needs. To go to our other partners in the community and ask for their help. We don't know what to ask right now, that's why we need this study.
Supervisor Rutzloff, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask this question to supervisor Rose, if, if that's okay? Um, I kind of agree with him when he's talked about having, you know, psychiatrists come that need something to come to. I was wondering what the thoughts would be if we did something with Racine County and with interest, with interest rates they way, the way they are? If we did something like bonding for about each community, each county, five million each, I'm just throwing out a number. So, that'd be ten million dollars, we could either expand a wing, build something, I'm not sure, but that'd be, with the budgets coming up, I know that might be tough, but I'd be curious from someone on the finance committee if they had a thought on that or if I'm a little off base on that. So, I, I direct that to Mr. Rose, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Rose, you want to address that question?
Well, I think, I think we'd have to think about that, that's not something that could be answered off the cuff.
That's a great answer.
Can I have his back, I mean, that's, that's really?
Well, that's what, if he says he has to think about it, that's his thing, so...
Alright, can I ask that a question to some, anyone else that might think that's a good idea? How about on the board?
Anybody on the panel would like to address that question?
Guess not.
Do you?
Alright, thank you.
And as supervisor Rose says, it's, it's kind of, uh, premature right now to, to think about that, those kind of dollars and what those dollars would be. If you, we keep in mind, you, you, if we do a regional concept, you have to, and we want to use all of our resources to its fullest, we need to design and with a hospital, a setting that is not an IMD. That way, we can have Medicaid paying for these hospitalizations. If you have a self, and that's where I don't understand some of these private hospitals that are opened up or are looking to open up in Green Bay, if they're IMDs, Medicaid patients, the county's gonna pick up that cost if they're involuntary. If they're voluntary, that falls back onto the patient. So, yeah, I don't, I don't really know how to answer that at this point in time without taking a look at who would be willing to partner with us and, and what that partnership would look like.
Okay.
Is that it supervisor Rutzloff? Thank you, sir, supervisor Alverna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, maybe just a little follow-up on that and, um, it's not, it's not a crazy thought, it's not out of the question and I think it would have to, you know, come from the county's administration, it would have to come from the county board, but sometimes when you need something and someone's not providing it for you, you have to do it yourself. Um, you know, we've all sat here and watched the Kenosha CABA give awards and things and there's a little company, not so little anymore, out in Twin Lakes called Allied Plastics that's won their Fast Five Award, won about every award they have. The reason Allied Plastics is here is because there's another business out in Twin Lakes called Five Star Automotive that made NASCAR bodies that needed a little part that this plastics company made and they couldn't provide it, so Five Star bought Allied and brought them here from New York and, um, that's how they got here. I get up at four thirty, so I'm getting a little tired, so I'm maybe not making much sense, but, um, we do a lot of things here as a county and we've got knowledgeable people and staff and the administration. So, I don't think it's out of the question, Mr. Rutzloff hinted at it a little bit. We're spending eight, eighteen point five million on Brookside, uh, building a facility. When I first came on the county board, our biggest debate was the, uh, the new jail, the, what we call the Detention Center, location for that. And we built that with a pod system, we have an infrastructure. We have the ability as a county to, to build and manage things, so I don't think people should quit thinking in those directions because we found with the nursing home that we can make money with this expansion. We're not doing this out of total compassion, if, if anybody thinks that, they're fooling themselves. Uh, we're gonna, we're breaking even on this eighteen point five million dollars. We have the facility, uh, at the Detention Center, uh, we have the ability to build pods, we have the ability to, we have eleven hundred employees, we have the ability to hire people. So, I wouldn't take that out of this discussion at all. Thank you.
Thank you supervisor Alverna. Supervisor Anita Johnson.
First, I want to go back to supervisor Rutzloff's question and I completely understand how it can't be answered on the spot, but I do think it is something that we have to explore because that is the solution. Um, but again, it's, it's dependent on so many things, we have to partner, we have to have the right kind of facility if we want it actually to work for us in the community. Um, so this is where the second part comes in. One of the advantages we have right now is that everyone is having this problem and that's actually an advantage to us, because what we need to do is we need to look at areas who are making it work for them, who are overcoming the obstacles, we have to find the locations who are making it work. How are they doing it, how is Green Bay bringing in people, what, you know what I mean? And, and just how are other areas attracting their physicians, their, their psychiatrists? And I think we've talked about all of the different ways, over, even just over the last four years I've been on human services, different ways to incentivize the growth, I think we just have to start acting on it. But I understand how a study is needed and I am not a fan of studies by any means, I am not a fan of studies, but sometimes you need to do them. In this case, we need to, because we need to find out who's doing what out there, what's working for people. I mean, especially if we're gonna think about building a facility, we need to have a study done to show us what's working and how to do it. We can't just go willy-nilly and, and fix, try to fix things because we can actually make things worse. So, I, I mean, I understand and, because I know I'm frustrated and I've been listening to this for four years and felt like nothing has been done whatsoever. Um, and, and so I can understand the frustration of some of my colleagues here who are very frustrated and I'm sure they don't mean to take it out on you guys because we know you guys can't do anything without money, so... So, uh, but I, I do understand that we need a study here. And, and hopefully, you know, after everybody has time to digest this, they'll understand too that, that we can't just go into this blind, we have to make the right choices.
Supervisor Blau, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is more like a comment slash question since I missed the boat on the question part, but has a study been done on this previously? It sounds as if this problem has been going on for quite a long time now. I'm hearing all these supervisors who've been here for quite a while saying that this problem seems to be existing, has been existing for a while and now all of a sudden St. Luke's closes, they have short, shortage of beds and now we have to do this study to figure out what's the next step. Now, so I'm just kind of curious as to why a study hasn't been done or did, did, you know, you guys feel it wasn't really necessary or, just a statement, so, thank you.
Prior to this year, we had the resources available through St. Luke's Hospital and when they've now shortened, uh, the beds or limited the number of beds and, um, have three psychiatrists left unbeknownst to us, that's what's created the issue that we have right here today. So, um, we were caught off guard and not made aware and I don't think anybody who used them knew that that was something they had planned and I don't know if the psychiatrist resigned or retired or whatever the case may be, but, uh, this is what we're dealing with right now that has driven the cost up.
Yeah, I'm just curious because it seems like it's been an ongoing problem, but then now all of a sudden this is made more urgent.
Well, there's really two issues, I mean, you have the ongoing problem of, um, potential shortage in providers and then you have what now is driving the cost, the hospitalizations. So, you have two tracks. Now, the shortage of providers, um, just to clarify something supervisor Gans made, that one in seventeen number you heard, those other people are getting assistance, it's just that one out of all those calls, one out of seventeen is ending up in an emergency detention, the rest are getting some sort of help, uh, through another program or, or some sort of assistance. We aren't just saying, sorry, you don't meet the qualifications for an emergency detention, have a nice day. We're saying, boy, it sounds like you could use some assistance here, there and everywhere. So, when you, when you're looking at those issues, understand it's really two tracks. So, you know, we got the hospital problem now and then the potential shortage of providers that you saw in that, that state chart, um, and that we've talked about throughout the evening tonight. Now, everybody that we have, that we're involved with, if they need to see a psychiatrist, they're gonna see a psychiatrist. They aren't, we're not gonna tell them, we'll come back in ninety days, have a nice day. We have some contracts with some of the local psychiatrists, we have Dr. McCarthy over at Kids, Dr. Sun does some consulting with them, so we do have access to psychiatrists right now. We're not saying, oh my gosh, we got, you know, five thousand people that can't receive care. We're saying those casos are getting stretched and part of the reason, as we talked about, is the fact that people have access to insurance now also. So, that's what, we're very aware of that and, and that's part of our, I think, more proactive stance to say, what can we do to recruit people in here? Is there incentive programs that people are offering? Is it through the community health center that you heard about? That maybe can reimburse people for their education they receive? All that stuff needs to be discussed and put on the floor. And that's why we need to gather that information, in my opinion, before we form a committee that we then have some guidance for. Um, and one other thing, I just pulled up this slide, when discussed, what can you do right now? There's a number of things right up here and some of it involves contacting your legislators, getting the feds involved, um, talking to the state people, these are all things that have been out there. NAMI has had a position paper on having Medicaid fund hospitalizations for a while now. That's a big part of what they have been trying to do. So, contacting Jack and figuring out what you can do to advocate on that behalf is another thing you can do. So, there are things to do right now, we're not just waiting for a study to magically take us to someplace else. Thank you.
Thank you, that's it.
Supervisor Decker.
Just a quick question, um, so the study's out there, when is it gonna be done? Do we know that?
As I mentioned yesterday, uh, we received information from the consultant yesterday. Uh, we would hope to begin that this fall and if at all possible, accomplish it yet this fall. Um, it's important, I would, would like to note that the consultant and her husband, who's a retired psychiatrist, he helped run the LaCrosse Behavioral Health Facility and has set up behavioral health facilities and worked in UW, the Madison, uh, also in behavioral health, so he has familiarity there. It may come in handy when it comes to discussions about perhaps a regional concept of, uh, setting up hospitalization for a tri-county or even more county area, so...
So, when you say this fall, I mean, today it was like fall, even though it's August, are you saying November, October?
I, you know, I don't want to get a set in stone date because when you're, when you're...
Before December?
I would hope so, because when you're, when you're meeting with community folks, it depends on calendars and they're in Madison, so there's some coordination of schedules there. We would like it done, but I want it done correctly too, I don't want to just rush it down the pipeline.
Oh, right, but I just, you know, I didn't know if it was gonna be six months, eight months, a year, so that's a lot quicker than I was thinking.
It can't drag on that long.
Um, so, you said you, so, back on what supervisor Rutzloff said, is, um, is that idea in there to, to add on to a facility that we own possibly, like Brookside or the Detention Center? Is that idea in there to see if that's feasible?
That would be one of the things that we would ask them to look at. We did do a study on the care center a couple of years ago to determine whether or not we needed more beds in a different facility. At that point in time, it's an eleven-bed facility and at that point in time, it was determined that we did not need to look at expansion, however, that could be something on horizon. So, we have that study, we'll share that with the consultants, have them take a look at the way that system's designed and maybe there's a better way to do things, um, by looking at how others are doing it.
Now, you also stated that you would like a, a committee to kind of work on this, a special committee, after the, the study is done. Now, you're, you're hoping that the study's gonna be done before, before December, let's just state so, September, October, November, that's only three months. Is, uh, forming a committee now to be in place when the study is done? So, they could just jump right in and take it on and run with it and prepare for the study? Um, in some meetings beforehand, so they're ready to, to jump in on that? Is that something that is a good idea or?
I, uh, would want to wait until after the study's done so we make sure we have the right committee members on that. And I know some folks on the board have expressed interest and we certainly will reach out to them. Uh, I would also like to be able to go back to the Human Service Board and report back monthly the progress of what's going on, um, and to keep you folks in the loop and share that. Certainly, our chair can share that on the county board floor too and during reports. So, we'll, we'll keep everybody in the loop, um, and then, but wait to form the committee once we see what the issues are and who are the people that could help us address those issues.
Okay, thank you.
I think to add to that, I'd like to say at this point that when that study's complete that we get a full analysis of a full board on that and then from that point on, I'd like to see someone from your, uh, place of operation give us a, every, every ninety days, give us an update on what's going on and what are we doing about things and things like that, so when this comes around next budget cycle, we're gonna be ahead of the budget.
Laverne will be happy to do that.
I guess it just got delegated, okay. And I'm sorry to interrupt your question, but I just wanted to dovetail into the way you were saying.
No, thank you very much.
Supervisor Decker. Move on to supervisor Frederick, you have the floor, sir. White Frederick.
Number one, one of the neuropsychologists that left, just so you guys know, he got a better offer to go to Minnesota and practice there and that's why he left St. Luke's in the middle of last year. So, he, he said, I'm getting offers from other places that I just cannot refuse and I'm not looking to leave, but they were coming after him and said, we... and I'm not looking to leave," but they were coming after him and said, "We will offer you whatever you want to come and see us." But as I've looked at this map over and over again, this is not a Kenosha problem, this is a regional problem. One thing I almost think we should do is, no matter what Kenosha finds as a solution, Racine is going to be with us on this as well, more than likely. If we find more beds, then they're going to want to bring their individuals down here. One thing I think that should happen sooner than later is maybe the Human Services Committee of both counties at least start a dialogue between the two, two of them, so they know what's going on, because they may be working on the same things we are, and that way we can have some sort of communication. And with me being on WCA and working with Racine, if I can help facilitate that, I'm more than happy to.
Thank you. Let's see who we got here. Supervisor Gents, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'm sorry that Supervisor Gable thinks that a committee makes no sense, but we talked about at length stakeholders in this situation, and pooling them together to get thoughts, I don't think is, is ever a bad idea. I mean, we could sit here and, and talk, and talk, and talk, but until we take action, nothing's going to happen. So I think that we should set up some way to contact the legislators through administration and through this board. I think we should set up the meeting between Racine and Kenosha's Human Services Committees. I think these are things we can do. I love Supervisor Rose's idea about going out and seeing if we can find some beds that, or, or talking to the schools, or doing that stuff now. I know Mr. Janson said we were doing some of that. I like Supervisor Decker's idea about starting a little ad hoc committee, maybe of just county board members, to make sure that this is being followed up on, because for seven years, I've been waiting for something to happen, and now we're doing a study. That brings me to the point of my putting my light on. Let's talk about this study for a little bit. How, how is it funded? Was it in the budget? I've not heard about this study up until now. Can somebody enlighten me on this study? It appears it hasn't been started, we don't know a scope, so enlighten me, please.
Thank you.
I think we're still trying to define the scope of the study. I think that the thing was that the issues that, that you raised Supervisor Gents and other members of the, of the human ser, members of the Human Services Committee, certainly, we were very happy to, to have the input and, and have the, the impetus behind doing something about the broader community problem of shortage of beds and shortage of psychiatry. But we, in order to get to that point that the committee wanted, we wanted to have better information, information that we don't have. We've met in the, in the past with, with hospitals, I mean, we've met with the ER rooms who tell, who point their finger and say, "What are you county going to do about the people who are in our emergency rooms with mental health issues?" And, and we've met with the Community Health Center, and there has been no progress. So we wanted to have some help in, in better understanding what the, what the options were. The study, we would be taking from our current mental health dollars, the MA revenue that we're, that we're earning. And we, in terms of the, we're still in the process of trying to define it, in terms of what are some of the things that, what... We certainly want an environmental scan, we want to understand what, in terms of psychiatry, what options are available to us in terms of schools, in terms of recruitment methods, understanding what, what would attract somebody to, people to this area. Environmental scan in terms of understanding the situation with the hospital beds. Why, why was it lucrative for that organization to go to, to Stephen's point? Why isn't it lucrative for our local hospitals to, to become involved and to understand those dynamics before we meet with them? So we're still trying to, to define the scope of it, and that's what, we just got a proposal yesterday from the, from the consultants that we'd like to use, and we still have to look at that and further, put some more meat on the, on the bones.
Okay, so who's the one, who, who are the ones that are forming this study, and, and what, what the scope of it is? Is there a committee? Is it you? Is it, who's, you're getting ideas from the consultant, but who's putting the thought into the scope of this study?
The folks.
Everybody?
The folks here at the...
Everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Is the, the scope of that study and what that study is going to actually do come before the Human Services Board, before it goes out?
Before this, oh, yes, of cour, yeah, I mean, we've been, yeah, yes.
I, I mean, I, you know, Supervisor Retsloff has had some frustration about how a study came back, because it wasn't worded the way he thought it was in the beginning, and I think that if we get a study on something, and we, I've taken seven years to, to percolate over this, and we have a committee of the whole, and all of a sudden a study goes out, and it, it doesn't cover everything that I'm comfortable with it studying, covering, then I'm not going to be happy with that. So after you guys put it together, it goes to the Human Services Board?
Yeah, we can do that, certainly.
And you're, and you're expecting that to be done in, what, the next couple of weeks? If we're going to do it in the, in the timeframe that was discussed by Supervisor Decker? I mean, to get it done in a couple of months, we, we need to know what the study is fairly quickly. What is the timeline on, on getting the outline of the study?
Yeah, I don't have an answer for you, I'm sorry.
Our next Human Service Committee meeting will be September eighth. We'll certainly put this on the agenda, and hopefully, through our negotiations with the consultant, we'll have information, and we can report back at that point in time with the specifics of what this study will entail, asking for feedback from the group.
Okay. Okay, that, that's awesome. I'll make a note of that, and I'll attend that meeting, so that I can hear what this study is going to do. Is there any way that we could also incorporate some resolutions coming forward to our, our legislators, federal and state, that Supervisor Hallman talked about, followed up by phone calls or administrative calls, or something that, that has action to it? Rather than us just sitting and talking about that being a possible idea?
We certainly can work with Supervisor Hallman on that. I know he provided some ideas earlier that Mr. Trushon was listening to, and we can work out some little details on what exactly we want to have addressed first, because under all this advocacy right here, there's certainly things that could be looked at, whether it's the letter-writing campaign, or things along that line.
Right, and just sending a resolution out is not, not the answer. We need to follow it up with phone calls and administrative help, and, I mean, this is, this is something that we need to, to generate some activity on. So I'd like to see maybe some resolutions on the next Human Services meeting as well. And I'd also like to see us contact the Racine Human Services Committee and see if we could get a joint. I, I want action, so I want to see if, so Supervisor Hallman or, or you could call and see if we could get a meeting put together to look at, I love the regional idea. So, I, I mean, these are all ideas we're kicking around, and I don't want them to remain ideas. I, I want to see them come into action, so those are some of my thoughts.
Yeah, I did have a conversation with the Racine County Human Services Director. I'll be it somewhat brief, because we said we're still working out the details of the study, and asked if they thought that that might be something they'd be willing to join us on. She said, certainly let her know what it is we're looking at, because they're experiencing similar issues with getting people into the hospitals. I would also ask that maybe these consultants that we're bringing in have a lot of experience in the state, and when it comes to some of these state funding requests that you see up here, they may provide us with more input, insight, who to contact, and things like that. So I, I would ask that some, we may not jump on some of this right away, because I think that'll be an important part of what they look at and say, "That's not even possible, don't even think about that. Here's something you should think about." So I'd like to have them weigh in on some of that also, but I, by our next meeting, hopefully, we have that discussion and can kind of start pinpointing more things for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Hallman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I heard some sort of suggestion potentially about considering building a mental health facility. I just want to point out, I was, was surfing news articles and noted that Bannock County, Idaho, has a seventeen point nine million dollar bond issuance out there, and they are weighing the options between expanding their jail and some sort of mental health facility. They're leaning more towards expanding the jail, because they know that there's an issue with potential overcrowding, and, and they want to avoid lawsuits. I do want to point out to this body that, that NACO, the National Association of Counties, is very aware of this as a problem. Multiple forums on it, almost at every single conference. But as far as a legislative priority, there were two or three different bills last year cycling through Congress, and NACO didn't necessarily take a position on any of them. But what they did say was that in whatever the final adoption might be, was that there were four key provisions that they wanted to emphasize. The first one being expanding access to the Health Information Technology for Economic and Clinical Care Acts and incentives for behavioral health providers, which includes more than seven hundred and fifty county behavioral health authorities. The second was reauthorizing the Mentally Ill Offender Treatment and Crime Reduction Act, a priority of NACO and its affiliate, the National Sheriff's Association. The third is easing Medicaid's Institutes of Mental Disease, the IMD restriction, which would permit states to use Medicaid to fund inpatient psychiatric hospital services and psychiatric residential treatment facility services for individuals between the ages of twenty-one to sixty-five, if such facilities demonstrate an average stay of less than thirty days. And fourth, investing in programs to expand and develop the behavioral health workforce. You'll notice on page twelve of your packets, as Mr. Janson has, has stated, what our staff, in the interim of them doing their study, has suggested to us that we take action on, which is also on the screen. Those are six recommendations that they have given to us, and I trust our county staff to do their jobs and to do it incredibly well. Out of those six, I laid out potentially really good ways to knock two of those off the list. What I didn't hear was anybody jump up and say, "I'll partner with you and write it. I'll help make phone calls, I'll do whatever." I didn't hear that. So this is an invitation, if there's anyone that wants to do that, consider the gauntlet has been thrown. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Rob Frederick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, are there any other lights on?
You've got one other light, two other lights on, two more.
Well, you know, when we talked about having a committee, the whole meeting at the Finance Committee, we knew there was going to be a study coming. I mean, I really appreciate you coming in here. There's a lot of information that was given, given to everybody. I think we pretty much got the gist of what's going on here, so, you know, at the risk of somebody thinking, "I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn," and thank you all for coming tonight. We know you're going to do a study, we know it's coming, we're, we'll all support in any way I can, but I'm, I make a motion to adjourn.
It's been a motion for...
To adjourn.
Adjourn, we've got a second by Supervisor Gable. We're going to have to do a, do a vote on this, right?
Yeah, you have to.
So, yes, if you're in favor. Hold on, she's got to clean, clean her screen out and everything. So yes, if you're in favor of adjourned. No, if you want discussion to continue for two more people.
Anybody that wants it to continue is going to do it without me.
Did you hear that motion there Supervisor Rose?
I'm done. I'm done, whether it passes or not.
Fifty?
Alverman's gone.
How many you need?
He's smart.
Alverman's gone. Okay, so the motion to adjourn is in order. Ten, ten voted yes, seven no, six are absent. Okay. You have adjourned.